A meeting of council to order at 7:06 for October 17th. We have regrets from councillor Wong and deputy mayor Valentino. We have an agenda before us, are there any changes to the agenda before us? Seeing none, we'll need a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Councillor Byer, councillor Foley, all those in favor? Kerry Denas, thank you. General inquiries, do we have any questions from the general public? Yes, please come forward, state your name and ask your question, please. Yep.
I would like to ask a question of mayor and council about the seniors' luncheon. It's to be held on October 28th. Is that strictly for only the people involved at the resource council? Or is that for all seniors of Thompson?
My understanding is that it's coordinated by the seniors' council. The mayor and council is invited to basically serve the tea, but it's coordinated by the seniors' council. As regards to the invite list, we as the city have no input to that. If there's an issue, I'm certainly, I'm certain that it can be raised with the coordinator of the seniors' council to ensure that all, it should be open to all seniors. But from the city's perspective, we're invited as mayor and council to serve tea at the seniors' tea, and that's our only input.
This is initiated by the senior resource council and not by the city? Okay. And I feel that it is excluding people who have been residents in this town for very many years, and they have not been given the opportunity even know about the senior resource council, their lunches, or any of the activities. This is a very poorly advertised event, and it should be inclusive of all seniors, in my opinion. Thank you.
Your name was?
Please tell me your name.
Thank you. Anyone else, questions from the general public? Second time. Third, hearing none. We'll go on to presentations. We have a delegation before us, Thompson Chamber of Commerce. Please come forward. Welcome, Oswald.
Hi, my name is Oswald Sam, I'm the president of the Chamber of Commerce. Actually, I do have a couple of other board members with me as well. I have Keith McDonald, who's our past president, and also we have Erica McCarthy, who is also on our board. And I should mention, we also have Colleen Smook, who also sits on our board as well. So I do want to thank the city for providing us the opportunity to make a presentation. I think this is the first time we've come here for a little while, so we just want to touch on a few items, but just a little bit of an intro with the Chamber of Commerce. I think most of you guys are aware of our mission, which is to promote and improve trade and commerce and the economic wellbeing in and around the city of Thompson. We are the major organization when it comes to being a, for businesses. We have 150-plus members. We've been around since the 1960s, and for the most part, we try to make sure we have a very inclusive organization, and we try to, as much as possible, try to partner with as many stakeholders as possible. There's a few things that we did want to go over. One of the things, first and foremost, I don't know if you guys are aware, is Northern Business Week this week. Now, most people across the country call it Small Business Week. A few years ago, we decided to rebrand Small Business Week, make it a little bit more of a NORM's theme, hence the NORM Business Week. We do have a number of items happening this week, I just wanted to promote that a bit, and also just for information of council and people watching, see if there's anyone who wants to partake in some of the events. Of course, for today, we're here today, we also launched our, we're getting into the 21st century, we just launched our own Facebook page, a long time coming, but that was officially launched today, and we hope to use this as a vehicle of communication, not just to our members, but also to the residents of Thompson, and also non-members, just to showcase what the chamber is about. And whenever we need to provide any updates on certain issues, we are going to use that as well as a mode of communication. We will be partnering with a development organization tomorrow, doing a presentation to UCN students. We try to encourage as much as possible engagement with the young people, and we are making this an annual event where we do go to the University College of the North, and we talk about things like small business, and you know, what the pros and cons are, and what the, basically what the benefits of being self-employed. On Wednesday, we will be having our luncheon, we'll have a keynote speaker talk about social media and business, basically the importance of social media, and why it's important for businesses to try and embrace this technology. And Thursday, which is our main event, we have at 7:00 PM at the River Lodge Place. We have a few guest speakers, including Mark Scott, who will be speaking about some of the issues around the Smolton Refinery in 2018. We'll also have Chief Marcel Moody, who will talk about some of the businesses on NCN, how they're doing, and how, you know, some of the source of employment those have been for their members. And we also have our own Kelly Bindle, who will be presenting on behalf of the province, the Yes North program. Small Business Week is a national celebration of Canadian entrepreneurs and their contribution, of course, to the Canadian economy. I'm sure a few of you people know about the impact of small businesses. They account for roughly 80% of all jobs in our economy when it comes to the private sector, an extremely important vehicle for economic development. We try and encourage as much support for our small businesses in Thompson. One of the things that we also want to touch on is our strategic priorities for the chamber for the 2016-17 year. We basically have been five focuses. One is more of a social media presence. We are going to be focusing even more on the whole issue of lobbying and helping to support issues when it comes to our chamber members, marketing, as well as our membership engagement. And also, we're going to be going into tourism a bit. We are looking at hoping to help facilitate the creation of a Thompson Tourism Strategic Plan. Also, I just want to announce that we will be moving our office. Of course, you guys may know that we are at the mall right now. We'll be moving over to 53 St. Crook Avenue. The main reason for that move is that we're seeing the needs of our membership, and one thing that the new office will provide us is more space. We plan to put in a resource center in that office that will, that will be of assistance for people who are in business, or who are looking at starting a business. It'll be providing information on grants and loan programs, and some technical assistance as well. We're hoping that just being right there in the downtown area where we were not that long ago, will be, will be a great place for people to be able to more easily access some of the services we provide. Finally, I just want to touch on the last topic, which is investment attractive. And you know, Thompson's a great place. I've been here for 23 years. I came up in 1993. I had your old two-year plan, like everyone talks about. I've done, I've done more in Thompson than I think I would have been able to done any place else. I love my home. I have a small child, he's six years old, and I'm growing him up in Thompson, and there's no other place I would want to be now, except for perhaps some of the long winters, which kind of, I think that could be said for most people. But aside from that, it is a fantastic place to live and to grow up your child. There's no doubt that we have some challenges coming up. We've been a city, we've had challenges before, and we've always overcome those challenges. We, we as a chamber feel that it's important to have open communication. We want to be a partner with the city of Thompson when it comes to, you know, helping to address some of the challenges we see coming up. But at the same time, we also want to remind people, there's opportunities as well as challenges, and I think it goes both ways. So we want to open up that dialogue. We have looked at other places in the north, we just started to review, you know, some of the other places that are about the same size of Thompson, not just in northern, but also southern locations. We've looked at things like comparing things like mill rates, and license fees, and business taxes, war and sewer rates. We are mindful of one thing, that we want to make Thompson investment attractive. We are mindful of the fact that we are competing against other places in the province. So as a chamber, we want to work with the city to help make Thompson as attractive as possible when it comes to investment. I think that's the key for us. We have, we are the service center in our region. I expect that we will continue being so, but I think there's a lot of opportunities for us to enhance that. So I think by us all working together, we will undoubtedly address some of the challenges coming up. As chamber president, I want to just state openly right now that we are here as a partner, and we hope to keep that open dialogue well into the future. Before I conclude, I just want to recognize one of our past chamber presidents, Penny. We have actually a lot of past presidents that you guys would be well aware of. So in saying that, and notice I kept my cellphone, because people accuse me of being pretty long-winded at times, so I actually was keeping a stopwatch on my cell, and I notice I'm only 17 seconds over my 10 minutes allotment. So that, I'm open for any questions?
Thank you, Oz, we appreciate your time management. Council, any questions or comments? Councillor Byer?
Just a question I look forward to the special on the strategic plan is, do you already have a framework, or are you trying to get people together to develop that framework?
We recently just applied to Tourism Manitoba for a grant. In that application, we did put together a little bit of a framework, and not to be too long-winded on this, but the main thing that we found that is NORM Manitoba, in fact the whole province, we, each of the individual municipalities, they of course should have their own Tourism Strategic Plan. It should complement, it definitely should not conflict with the regional tourism plan. So to answer your question, our main thing that we want to look at in regards to framework is to work with Tourism North and the province to put together grassroots approach to Thompson's specific tourism plan that will engage the various stakeholders, and we'll talk about what are some of the current resources we have, where some of the things that we feel are some opportunities, and we want to make sure we have an open dialogue, and we also want to make sure everyone's on the same page. So that's basically what we're looking at in regards to a tourism plan. We don't have any preconceived notions as which areas we want to focus on. We want that to be driven by the operators and the stakeholders in the community, and residents.
Seeing none, I want to thank you, Oz, for your presentation. We look forward to working with you in the near future. Thank you. Next, we have the adoption of minutes. We have a resolution, Resolution 2016200, moved by councillor Foley, signed by councillor Ellis. We resolve that the minutes of the regular meeting of council are held in council chamber City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Monday, October 3rd, 2016, be adopted as circulated. Call for the question. All those in favor? Kerry Denas, thank you. Next, we're going into committee reports. We have the HR committee report. Councillor Wong and deputy mayor Valentino have sent regrets for the meeting. I'm the other member of the committee, so if council will indulge, I'll read the report, and then administration can support. This is the Human Resources Committee Report for May 2016 to October 2016. Committee members are councillor Duncan Wong as the chair, deputy mayor Kathy Valentino and mayor Dennis Fenskey. Administration, Gary Sepatelli, city manager, and Deanna Condekor, HR manager. Recruitment and hiring, we are currently recruiting a communications officer and four in-scope positions in public safety. Training, level-two supervisor development course attending by members of the management team. Return-to-work training for leaders and employees upcoming in November. Branding, reviewing and updating service awards and internal materials, assets to include the new brand. Return to work, collaborating with union leaders to review and update city's return-to-work program. Long-term service awards, held on October 7th, 2016, to honor employees reaching milestones, milestone years in 2015 and 2016. Various policy review, labor relations, and grievances were held as well. That concludes the report from the Human Resources Committee. Administration, anything to add? Seeing nothing, council, questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll receive the report as information. We're now going into correspondence. We have a letter from Eileen Clark, Minister of Indigenous and Municipal Relations, in regards to 2016 Transit Operating Grant. This is to, dear Mayor Fenskey, I'm pleased to advise that this Transit Operating Grant payment in the amount of $175,180.74 has been directly deposited to the municipality's account. The initial 2016 Transit Operating Grant operated amount is based on an estimate of net operating costs for Thompson Transit Service in fiscal year 2016, including an adjustment of $8.95 to reflect an underpayment in the previous year's grant. The balance of the 2016 grant will be provided to the city by March 31, 2017, once final 2016 transit financial information is available. The Transit Operating Grant is part of the overall provincial funding support provided to the city of Thompson in 2016. I trust this grant will assist the city in its efforts to deliver an accessible and affordable public transit service to the citizens of Thompson. Sincerely, Eileen Clark, Minister of Indigenous and Municipal Relations. Administration, anything to add? The amount, as stated, is $175,180.74. Council, any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go to the next letter. It's a letter again from Eileen Clark, Minister of Indigenous and Municipal Relations, in regards to the funding towards the cost of four firefighter positions. Again, dear Mayor Fenskey, I'm pleased to advise that a total of $328,600 in provincial funding towards the cost of four firefighter positions in the city of Thompson has been directly deposited to the city's account. These funds are provided under the same terms and conditions as when the grant was established in 2007, which required that funding be used to add four Class 1 firefighter positions to the existing staff complement to be deployed in frontline positions. The provision of this and other provincial funding supports reflects our government's commitment to ensure a safe and secure city for the citizens of Thompson. Sincerely, Eileen Clark, Minister of Indigenous and Municipal Relations. Administration, anything to add?
It's a group full staff, sir.
Okay, and the amount is $328,600. Council, any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go to the next letter. It's from Mike Palacek, National President of the Canadian Union of Postal Workers, in regards to another opportunity to have your say in Canada Post Review, and there's also a QP letter attached. Dear Mayor Fenskey, another opportunity to have your say in Canada Post Review. I'm following up on our June 6 correspondence about the Canada Post Review to provide you with additional information on Phase 2 of the review. This fall, a parliamentary committee will be consulting with Canadians on postal service and options identified by Task Force in Phase 1. The committee will make recommendations to the government by year's end. The government expects to announce its decisions about Canada Post in the spring of 2017. You may be interested to know that the options identified by the Task Force include major changes to the moratorium on post office closures in rural and small towns. The Task Force suggests updating or refreshing the moratorium. It outlines the cost savings that could be achieved by converting to franchises, or closing all corporate outlets, or only the 800 highest-yielding offices. You can see the full Task Force discussion paper, and they provided the website. QP would like to ensure that the views of municipalities are considered during each stage of the Canada Post Review. Therefore, we are urging you to fill out the parliamentary committee's online survey from September 26 to October 21, and provided the website, and encourage residents to do likewise. During this time, paper surveys will be available upon request. The committee will also hold public consultations across the country. The union has attached information on how to provide input in Phase 2, as well as a new resolution for your consideration. You can learn more about the review by going to QP, the Canada Post Review, and that Canada Post Review website. Thank you for taking the time to read this letter, and anything you do to help us convince the parliamentary committee to recommend against further cuts at Canada Post in favor of building a 21st-century post office that expands services, generates revenues, and meets the needs of Canadians. In solidarity, Mike Palacek, National President. Administration, anything to add? Seeing none, council, any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go to the next letter. This letter is from Cameron Freezen, Minister of Finance, in regards to an invitation for the 2017 provincial budget consultations. It says, "As worship, Manitobans are expected and deserve responsible fiscal management for their government. As we move forward with the implementation of Budget 2016, Manitoba Finance is beginning preparations for the 2016, or sorry, 17 provincial budget, and is asking for input from Manitobans. Prudent financial management, strategic investments in infrastructure, strengthened frontline services, and transparent accountable budgeting will allow Manitobans, Manitoba to invest where it matters most to Manitoban families, while slowly and responsibly returning to our province to economic stability and balanced budgets." Excuse me. Small businesses, nonprofit groups, indigenous organizations, industry representatives, and individuals from every region of Manitoba are invited to participate in this important process by making a submission at www.yourprovinceyourplan.ca. All Manitobans are invited to present their views via a new interactive build-a-budget tool, which can be found at www.yourprovinceyourplan.ca. However, we would like to invite you to make an oral presentation at the following in-person meeting, Monday, October 24th, 1:30 to 3:30 PM, 274 Thompson Drive, Thompson, Manitoba. Please RSVP by 4:30 on October 17th to finance@leg.gov.mba.ca, or call 204-945-3952 to ensure your participation. Additionally, participation in www.yourprovinceyourplan.ca will continue to be accepted into early 2017. I encourage you to share your results on social media, and use the interactive financial literacy tool to educate your community about the importance of strong fiscal planning. With your participation, we can ensure, we can help ensure your priorities are heard. Sincerely, Cameron Freezen, Minister of Finance." We'll go to administration for support. Anything to add?
Just that you have to remember that the council will attend the conversation on the 24th.
Thank you, council, any questions or comments? Councillor Byer?
Just like to encourage people to go to that site and take advantage of that. It's a direct input into provincial planning, so I hope people take advantage of it.
Councillor Smook?
Yes, I'm glad people will be attending. I need to send my regrets as I'll be out of the city on Monday in Winnipeg.
Councillor Matichuk?
I'm just wondering where 274 Thompson Drive is? Which building?
It's cool, isn't it? Thompson TRCC. Will that be the Mary Fenskey or the other room?
It's in the gym.
It's in the gym?
It's in the gym.
Bill Kamaski Training Facility. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go to the next letter. This is from Heather Stepherson, Attorney General, Minister of Justice, in response to the Community Safety Officer Program review. Let's see here. "I would like to thank City of Thompson for providing Manitoba justice with a copy of City of Thompson Community Safety Officer Program CSOP review. Manitoba Justice is committed to completing an evaluation of the CSOP pilot, together with the City of Thompson, to assess best practices and lessons learned. The city's experience with the establishment of the program, together with the statistics and observations set out in the review, will undoubtedly inform the evaluation and the future of the CSOP across the province. As the two-year CSOP pilot approaches the midpoint of the second year, it is an opportune time for us to commence the evaluation process. To that end, your officials will be asked for input in the coming weeks to discuss the scope and terms of the program evaluation. Manitoba Justice looks forward to our continued partnership and appreciates the hard work and dedication of Thompson officials and CSOs in making the first year of the CSOP a success. Sincerely, Heather Stepherson, Attorney General, Minister of Justice." Administration, anything to add? Thank you. Council, any questions or comments? Councillor Clota?
My understanding that this was approved as a two-year funding. Is there any indication that it will be continued, or what should we be doing to ensure it is continued?
The process outlined with Minister Stepherson was that the annual evaluation, which would be conducted by the city of Thompson, and circulated to the Minister of Justice and her department. Subsequently, in the letter, Minister of Justice will be asking for a meeting with administration to review the evaluation process of the first year. That process will continue on the second year, and during the second year, which is now, the ongoing discussion will be with the province of Manitoba for the continuation of that program, which is funded 50/50 between the province of Manitoba and the city of Thompson. With the results being known, we have ongoing discussions at the Association of Manitoba Municipalities conferences in regards to the CSO programs. We're being looked at by the communities in the province to see where the province is going to move in, in supporting financially and resource-wise CSO programs in other communities. So the first evaluation will be conducted shortly in conjunction with the province of Manitoba. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have the letter from Chris Girtson, President of the Association of Manitoba Municipalities, in regards to the AMM Cities Caucus Meeting. Mayor Fenskey, we'd like to thank you and the city of Thompson, council and staff for hosting the AMM Cities Caucus Meeting on September 22 in Thompson. Based on the feedback the AMM received from the caucus members, the meeting went extremely well. The tour of your city was very informative and important for everyone to understand the unique economic situation in the north. Once again, thank you for inviting the AMM Cities Caucus to the city of Thompson. Sincerely, Chris Girtson, President of the Association of Manitoba Municipalities." Administration, anything to add? Council, any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll receive for information. Next, we have a letter from Ben Henderson, Chair of the Green Municipal Fund Council of Federation of Canadian Municipalities, in regards to our funding application for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades and associated works, and a letter from FCM. This is project titled City of Thompson Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrades and Associated Works, application number GMF 15110. Dear Mayor Fenskey and member of councils, on behalf of the Green Municipal Fund, GMF Council, and the FCM's Executive Committee, I would like to congratulate the city of Thompson on its successful funding application for the above-noted initiative. It is my pleasure to confirm that the city of Thompson has been approved for a loan in the amount of $5 million, combined with a grant in the amount of up to $750,000. In the near future, Ms. Natalie Lapointe will contact the city of Thompson to finalize the agreement for this funding. FCM's obligation to fund the above-noted initiative will only become binding once the agreement is signed. Public announcements regarding GMF-funded initiatives are overseen by the FCM. In partnership with the Government of Canada, a GMF communications officer will contact the city of Thompson to discuss the process for our public announcements. Until that time, before making any public statements related to the status of the application process for GMF funding, please contact us at 613-907-6208, or by email at gmf@fcm.ca. Thank you for your interest in the GMF. We look forward to working with you to improve the quality of life in your community, and to sharing the results of your initiative with communities across Canada. Sincerely, Ben Henderson, Chair, Green Municipal Fund Council." I'll go to administration for support. Anything to add? Council, any questions or comments? This is a good news letter from the GMF. Again, thanking administration for doing the legwork and making the applications, and the successful application of the $5 million loan and the $750,000 grant. hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. We're now moving into resolutions. And the first resolution we have to accept the offer Manitoba Wastewater Services Board between the Manitoba Water Services Board and the City of Thompson, respecting Phase Two of the Water Main Renewal Project. And there's a memo from the manager of infrastructure attached as well in your package. Resolution 2016-201, moved by Counsel Smoak, seconded by Counsel Ellis. Whereas on May 11th, 2016, Counsel passed Resolution Number 2015-105, accepting the offer between the Manitoba Water Services Board and the City of Thompson respecting the 2016 Water Main Renewals. And whereas the City of Thompson was approved for funding under the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund in the amount of three million dollars, respecting Phase Two Water Main Program, now therefore be resolved, the Counsel accept the offer between the Manitoba Water Services Board and the City of Thompson respecting Water Main Program Phase Two. We'll go to administration for support. Jenny?
This agreement gives the Manitoba Water Services Board the responsibility for the comprehensive management of the design, tender, and construction of Phase Two of the Water Main Project. The three million dollar funding through the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund is funded fifty percent by Canada, twenty-five percent by the provincial government, and twenty-five percent by the City of Thompson.
Counsel, going to the mover, Counsel Smoak, anything to add? Counsel, any questions or comments? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie Dunas, thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve the Special Event Status for the Artists, Crafters, and Small Business Expo, and we have a letter and a memo attached in our packages. Resolution 2016-202, moved by Counsel Byer, seconded by Counsel Smoak. Whereas Community Futures North Central Development, CFNCD, will offer a free exposition to small business, home-based businesses, artists, and crafts, crafters to promote their products within the City of Thompson. And whereas CFNCD has applied for a Special Event Status for this event, now therefore be resolved that Artists, Crafters, and Small Business Expo be declared a Special Event in Thompson, Manitoba on Sunday, November 6th, 2016. We'll go to administration for support?
It's something you have to, excuse me, that's gone before Counsel in the last few years and we've dealt with it. As for our small crafters within...
Mover, Counsel Byer, anything to add?
Just reiterate that this has been an annual request now for a, a few years. And also, it's for anybody who's been, it's a wonderful opportunity to see what some of Thompson's artists and crafters can produce. It's also a nice opportunity for them to sell their wares and if you are starting your Christmas shopping at the time, that's an excellent place to start it.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions or comments? Counsel Clatta?
I just want to make note that it's not restricted to Thompsonites only. Yeah, line areas bring in crafts, the leather works and so on. It is a great place to do Christmas shopping, as Counsel Byer indicated. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie Dunas, thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve the September Check Registers. This is Resolution 2016-203, moved by Counsel Foley, seconded by Counsel Byer. Check Register dated September 2016, general accounts payable checks totaling one million nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ten cents. Payroll dated September 2nd, 2016, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand and twenty-two cents. Payroll dated September 16th, 2016, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one and two cents. Payroll dated September 30th, 2016, two hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and ninety-four and twenty-eight cents, for a subtotal of eight hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and forty-one and fifty-two cents, for a grand total of two million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. The accounts contained in this check register have been reviewed by the members of the Finance and Administration Committee. Administration, anything to add? Go to the mover, Counsel Foley, anything to add? Counsel, any questions or comments? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie Dunas, thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve the change of location for the Northern Delegation Meeting. This is Resolution 2016-204, moved by Counsel Byer, seconded by Counsel Ellis. Whereas on October 3rd, 2016, Counsel passed Resolution Number 2016-199, approving attendance for Counsel Smoak at the Northern Delegation Meeting in the PAW on October 13th and 14th, 2016. And whereas the meeting location has been changed from the PAW to Winnipeg as the Northern Delegation was invited, the Kilkivik Inuit Association from Nunavut. And whereas Counsel showed consensus by email for the change of location for the meeting and the costs associated with the charge, with the change. And whereas during the Northern Delegation Meeting in Winnipeg on October 14th, 2016, an additional meeting was scheduled in the PAW on October 21st, 2016. Now therefore be resolved, the Counsel approve Counsel Smoak's attendance at the Northern Delegation Meeting in Winnipeg, Manitoba, and the additional cost of two hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-four cents associated with the change. And be it further resolved, the Counsel approve Counsel Smoak's attendance at the Northern Delegation Meeting in the PAW on October 21st, 2016, and the costs be borne under the terms and conditions of bylaw 1897-2013. Go to administration for support, anything? Go to the mover, Counsel Byer?
Only that I believe Counsel has done an excellent job at representing Thompson in the interests of the region at these meetings and I look forward to this passing.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie Dunas, thank you. Now move into the Mayor's Report. This is for the activities between October 4th and 17th. I visited Amanda Stille's classroom at R.D. Parker Collegiate on October 4th to talk about municipal government. Attended and brought greetings at the Citizenship Ceremony on October 14th at Westwood School. There were eighty-four, eighty-six new Canadians sworn in. It's always a special event to have that number of people sworn in to Thompson and/or the surrounding area. It's always nice to see the smiling faces of everyone that becomes a Canadian citizen. The weekly CIMTF conference call meetings were held on Tuesday morning. I also attended the grand opening of the UCN Child and Family Learning Center on Sunday at one o'clock. And today, attended, partially attended the housing forum today with Matthew Biscarlio and Counselor Penny Byer at the Best Western Hotel. And various committee meetings were held, Development Review, Public Works, Finance, and Administration Legislative, and Intergovernmental Affairs, and Public Safety. I have one proclamation. Whereas driving is an important and exciting rite of passage for youth and is also one of the riskiest activities for young people to engage in. Whereas teen driver safety is a significant issue in Canada, young drivers are overrepresented in all road-related injuries and fatalities. Whereas National Teen Driver Safety Week is a week dedicated to raising awareness and seeking solutions to preventable teen deaths on the roads across Canada, everyone has a role to play in creating change amongst their peers, in classrooms, and in their communities. Now therefore be, therefore by the virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of this Thompson, I hereby proclaim October 16th to 22nd, 2016, as National Teen Driver Safety Week in the City of Thompson, and signed by Mayor Dennis Fenske. It's dated Thompson, Manitoba, this 13th day of October, 2016. With that, I will go to Counsel for any other events they attended on behalf of the City of Thompson during the last couple of weeks. Counsel Byer?
Not necessarily on behalf of the City of Thompson, but certainly of, of interest to the City of Thompson. The Canadian Mental Health Association had its AGM and they, two things come out of that. One is, I recall when I first got on Counsel, they were facing some severe financial difficulties. It's nice to see that they have pulled themselves out of those difficulties. The other thing is the sheer number of programs they offer. I had no idea that they offered as many programs to as broad a spectrum as they do. So, it was certainly worth seeing and I'm sure that they would be more than willing to share information. As Mayor Fenske said, there was the Northern Stakeholders Meeting on Housing today and it was very, it's really nice to see the province do this and they'll be doing it again on the 24th with a different topic, to get input on what's important to us. This was directed at housing and there is 12 people in the room with some really good opinions. I, I think, I think the people from the province will be going home with an awful lot of notes. There's also, I wasn't able to stay for the whole thing, but I think of significance in light of President Saw's comments on tourism. There was an ad hoc tourism meeting today and as I said, I wasn't able to stay for the whole thing. But I think there is a growing interest in tourism ventures in Thompson and I, I hope to see that take off. And last but not least, Counsel Clatta and I are both members of the board for the Lions Manor 55 and we're both hoping, seeing as we have half a check, half a box to check off now, we're just about there, but I, I think we're very, very close to being able to spread some good news for the City of Thompson in terms of seniors' housing. So, that's that.
Counsel, any other reports? Last, Counsel Foley?
Yeah, October 8th, I had the pleasure of giving greetings at the North Stars Home Opener. It's, looking forward to a good season, although we started out a little bit rough. Hopefully with some hard work and determination, we can, we can have a season that we can all be proud of. Also, just want to let everybody know that the Recreation Parks and Culture Committee Meeting is tomorrow, Tuesday, October 18th, 12 p.m. at the Mary Fenske Boardroom in the TRCC. It is a committee meeting that is open to the general public. There are no in-camera discussions at tomorrow's meeting, so if you're able to attend, we welcome you.
Counsel Smoak?
Yes, I'm just on behalf of, it was 64 people, 32 motorhomes and another group of eight plus their motorhomes, to thank you all for the snow. Twelve of them had never seen snow, never mind driving in snow, so they've all got, as far as Winnipeg, the last group got to Winnipeg safely today, but they weren't appreciative of our weather. Thank you. And thanks to the hospitality around town. No matter where they went, they were greeted with great hospitality.
Counsel, any other reports? Seeing none, we'll call for motion to adjourn. Counsel Foley, Counsel Byer, all those in favor? We stand adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening.